Hi. This is supplemental notice of meeting by video conference according to the orders of Officer Governor, Bishop Mark 16, 2020, extended by City Council. Conduct regular meetings in person and by video conference. Today, a regular session will start at 6:00. Our special session is starting at 5:00 today. Gentlemen and anybody else, so that you're aware, if you wish to wear a mask, which we do recommend, we are by this technological device called the owl, which picks us up video and audio. Please speak up so that it's carried all the way. And if you can, if you want to just drop the mask while you're speaking, that would be fine, then put it up, whatever you would like to do. For those in the audience and for the recording purposes, we are missing at the moment Mr. Contreras and we're missing Mr. Cooks. Mr. Cooks will be logging on remotely. We have cleared with the city attorney that remote participation in the city council meeting is authorized and a vote is authorized as well for information purposes. So with that, our audience is going to be Zoom and listen only when we get to that point. And looking at our sessions, we are going to go through immediate work on executive session. So I'm going to recess our briefing session at 5:07. Okay, we are reconvening City Council at 5:44.
Let everyone know that Mark's in the room because we don't see him on the camera.
And.
You've got to be somewhere where we can see you on the camera. That's the Attorney General's rules, not mine. So you either have to go in there, you have to sit somewhere where the camera picks you up.
With this.
Actually, you just move right over.
Actually, you know what you could do, Mark? If you don't mind sitting in this chair, because now I can sit anywhere. You got word for you?
All right, let's call it 5:47 then. Open session, we're going into our briefing session. Work session, briefing session. First thing on the agenda for item number two, City Manager to discuss the consent items. So it's been immediate, floor is yours, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Today, we have four items on our consent agenda. Our first item, which is item 4A, consider resolution authorizing execution of City of Grand Prairie contract number 21186, an interlocal cooperative agreement with Kurtzko Inc. for pavement crack and joint sealing services for the prices set forth in the City of Garland's contract, and with an estimated expenditure of $225,000. Just as an update, the FY 2020-22 crack sealing contract. Pavement crack sealing is part of the city's annual pavement maintenance program. Crack sealing keeps water from getting into the pavement, subgrade, and deteriorating the road. The city allocates $225,000 for crack sealing in FY 22. The staff report included a map illustrating crack sealing locations. The contract is, as I mentioned, with Kurtzko, using a cooperative purchasing agreement with the City of Grand Prairie. This is an annual contract. Item 4B, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of a backhoe from South Star JCB through Sourcewell contract, in the expenditure amount of $111,850. The loader backhoe purchase will replace a 17-year-old loader backhoe that is at the end of life. It has 1,764 hours and has engine problems. The loader backhoe is used by the Utility Division for Waterline Repair Projects. The cost of the loader backhoe is $111,850, $850, and is funded out of the city's vehicle replacement fund. The old loader backhoe will get auctioned off with proceeds going back into the replacement fund. The contract, as I mentioned, is with South Star JCB using Sourcewell Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Item 4C is, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of pavement lifting services for Martex Concrete Lift and Stabilization Inc., located in Fort Worth through the City of Grand Prairie's contract, for the unit price bid with an estimated expenditure value of $100,000. The FY 22 pavement lifting contract is part of the city's annual pavement maintenance program. Pavement lifting is used on concrete roads to raise pavement sections that settle and restore a smooth driving surface. The city has allocated $100,000 for pavement lifting in FY 22. Focus is Omaha Drive and Cockrell Hill Road. A map was included in the staff project report. Finally, item 4D. This is our consider resolution authorizing the purchase agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. for our annual software support and maintenance for the city's ERP system, using Sourcewell Cooperative Purchase Agreement. Tyler Technologies. The essential part of our ongoing operations of the city is our ERP. Our intercoordinated resource planning system is in support of a license agreement for the MUNIS software and all modules billed to the city on an annual basis. This allows the ongoing use of the MUNIS ERP system, products, and provides software-related telephone and online support. In 2021, 124 support cases were submitted. Included in this annual maintenance and support fees are the full site licensing for Tyler software, including fixes, enhancements, and patches. This contract, as mentioned, is with Tyler Technologies. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, City Manager. Any questions? Okay. Just one quick thing, it's a little bit of housekeeping. I know we have two preparations to be done in City Council, and I don't have those, I haven't seen those for signature.
I have one.
I haven't signed, I haven't seen, I haven't seen them for signature.
Hey, Mayor Gordon, they're at the dais. I've already handled your sig, they're at the spots for our council members already.
We're not moving from here, though.
So the council didn't know, isn't it?
Sorry?
So the council didn't know, isn't it?
Okay, I was under misunderstanding. We are going into chambers for the council meeting. I thought we were staying in here for the council meeting as well.
That is.
I don't know. That was, looking at the way everything was being logistics and everything, the way it handled all video on the road here and there, I kind of presumed, shame on me, that we would handle all the council in here as well as with the audience out there if necessary.
Attorney, is that a problem? I think it actually might be easier for us and safer.
Technologically.
Looking, it says the briefing room and the council chamber, so either one's fine.
Okay, I'll make sure we get all the information inside.
So council, okay, we remain in here, so.
Mayor, what do you want to do with public comment in the event that somebody comes down here and wants to do the lectern? Can we see it so that their comments can be addressed to you? That's a question that is state.
We could actually, I think, because we're allowing staff to come in to present to us, we could actually allow a citizen one at a time to come in and social distance and speak to us personally.
Or can we just broadcast it?
However, good question, however we can handle that.
Yeah, if you can broadcast it just so that it shows up, that it gets addressed to you, then I'm fine with that because it says, it says both rooms.
Okay, so then I'm also going to assume there are two emails on citizen comments that are out there.
We're going to grab that, Dave, it's taking care of that while the.
And then our ITech people need to understand, if need be, do you feel comfortable, Mayor Gordon, going out and saying, we're gonna, you know, normally we come out, but since the COVID thing, we're going to try to keep the council safe. You're free to watch, make sure that we're being broadcast out there is the only.
I will personally go out there. All right, very good. Okay, so I'm sorry, I'm sorry that just needed to take care of that. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item number three, briefing on political sign ordinance. Neighborhood Services Manager, you have a tenant.
I'll be handling the presentation.
Scott Timon will be handling the presentation. Okay.
All right, so this is about the political sign ordinance. And the reason why we're reviewing this is recently Texas, the state legislature reviewed municipal regulations of political signs. And specifically, the legislature sought to limit municipal authority to prohibit, approve, limit, or charge a special fee for removal of political sign on private real property. And then just so you know, to be protected, the sign must contain primarily a political message and not be rentable, or you can't have any advertisements on it, basically. So our current language right now does not limit, and it does not limit municipalities' regulation of a sign that has an effective area greater than 36 feet or more than eight feet in height. Illuminator has moving elements or the ability to control the use of real property where it holds an easement or other encumbrance for a public purpose. And this falls in line with the existing state language right now. So tonight, we wanted to review timing and placement of political signs in the city, compare the current ordinance to what surrounding cities have, and to identify potential conflicts and seek direction from this body regarding preferred updates and modifications. A review of what we have right now, political signs are permitted in polling areas, and they are permitted on private property subject to state regulation. We do have illustrated figures throughout the zoning or the municipal code that shows where these polling places are located. We have one right here at the James Collins Reg Center. We have one at the middle school, Reed Middle School. We have the location at Fernando's Elementary and Byrd Middle School as well. Signs on polling areas may not be over three feet in height.
One question.
I'm sorry?
Are we not picking up the church, was the church on, what's this, you said?
It's not one, no, sir, no.
All right.
And just to review these, these blue lines that you see here, these are the locations along the right of way within the polling areas that you can locate a sign. Any other right of way location in the city, you cannot locate a political sign. So what is regulated by the state? Again, they are limited to eight feet in height and 36 feet in area. Signs cannot be located within, in the right of way unless with special permission, which some cities do have this process. They can be placed on private property with permission of the property owner, and then there are no time regulations placed by the state. So what are other cities doing? So the city of Lancaster, they follow the state, eight feet in height, 36 feet in area. They don't put any additional restriction on that. Signs cannot be illuminated and cannot have moving parts. And this was special towards Lancaster. Signs cannot be placed on public property within the right of way nor within 25, within the 25-foot visibility triangle associated with intersections. This will be applied to private property if it's in a sight visibility triangle. This is for public safety purposes. And then signs may not be placed on public property on election day, which is pretty unique.
Do I go back to that, I'm sorry?
Yes, sir. The city of Hurst, no political signs within the right of way. What's different about them? They just refer to the Texas Election Code for polling places and just basically kick everything to the state. So city like Hurst, they just follow the state completely. Cedar Hill, no political signs in the right of way. Within incorporated limits, they still have future areas to annex. In the future, you can put signs out in the unincorporated limits, basically your UTJ properties. Signs on private property are permitted, just following the state, and they cannot be eliminated or have moving parts. Cedar Hill does not prohibit posting of political signs during a voting period on the premises of a public building being used as a polling place or early voting, polling place, if posted outside the area 100 feet from an outside door through which a voter may enter the polling place. So basically, if you're entering the door, no sign, no sign shall be within 100 feet of that point you're entering the building.
Which we do that anyway.
Right.
Yep, that's state law.
So anything about our current language that we'd like to modify, placing any timeframes, placement requirements, anything additional? Do we want to add language prohibiting, eliminate signs? Just, we're following the state, we know we have to do that anyway, but just making it more of a case like we do with other language, prohibiting other things. Do we like the language prohibiting visibility triangles and protecting those? I don't, we don't allow them, trying to think where this would be the case. Well, there are some corners that we do have some platted properties where the, the right of way and the property boundaries might be pretty close to the streets, so this might be some good language to, to take in. Or any other items that we see?
When, here goes back to where each of us come from and our own business experience and stuff, when there's an overriding or a superseding federal or state law regulation ordinance, is it necessary to reiterate that and create one of our own or simply refer citizens to where it exists in the state?
Yeah. That's a good question.
I mean, do we have to reinvent the horse and reinvent the wheel or just refer citizens to what already exists? I don't know. Is this an exercise to put our people through to the rewriting an ordinance where all you got to do is say, go here and look at it?
Well, except for the city's right of way. You control the city's right of way, not the state of Texas, not the federal government.
Right.
So the general rule is, no signs of any kind within the public right of way. Because you don't want all these little bandit signs, you know, cluttering up vistas of your streets. So political signs have historically been treated differently in the United States, and we've, but the courts have said, no signs means no signs. The reason you have signs at Byrd and at the, at the polling places is because state law says we have to. It's the polling place, you get to put up all those signs.
Right.
So this has been, and I know Greg and I go way back, 30 years on, on political signs, because it used to be, I can't remember a Saturday in May that I didn't get a phone call from him or one of the candidates complaining about everyone's political signs. So we decided, no signs, you can't have any signs, you can do whatever you want on private property, that's up to you. We're not gonna, that's fine. So that's kind of where we've historically landed on this, because it, I mean, I don't know, you mention the people's names.
Because our current ordinance stipulates no signs on any public right of way within the city limits.
Yes.
Okay.
And then limits it to the polling.
Mr. Contreras, when did you show up?
I just walked in about three minutes ago.
All right, so somebody please make a note, City Secretary taking notes that Mr. Contreras has entered the city council meeting at 5:58. Okay, thank you.
Part of why we also brought this back, and I'll step back, is because I think last year, and Kristen's not here, we had some conflicting ordinances that existed. And so initially, when they had the introduction to the campaign group, we gave them a document. And apparently, the information, it was the wrong document or the wrong ordinance with the wrong information, which caused some confusion. And I started getting calls about when you can put the signs up, when you can take them down. And I think in speaking to our attorney, we talked about, rather than going and looking at it as a whole, we kind of patched it. And so what we're looking for is to have one document so that we do not have conflicting information. And so that was part of the task that we gave our staff to do, because some of council members had actually spoke to Paul prior to my starting about certain things that they wanted in signs. And from an enforcement standpoint, what Paul said is, council controls some of this. And so if there are things that you saw that did not make sense, then this is that opportunity, as this is a council ordinance, to fix some. For example, the signs of, the size of signs and things like that, I think were some of the conversations that happened last year. So we're just trying to make sure we're proactive, ensuring that there's one document, that it's consistent, that we also make sure that it is the only thing that governs what's happening in this process.
Well, from what I read, we as a council were not provided the current ordinance. It's not in our packet. So we have nothing as far as a reference to go on to give you recommendations or changes or edits to what we have existing because it's not there. So I think we need a little more information or provide answers to some questions.
Sure. Yeah, section, does it, does the staff report talk about the section that we're looking at?
No, it does not.
Exactly, which political sign ordinance.
There it is. It's a, it's a one-page, it's a one pager without any documentation.
Even our section, it's a, it's a very short, even the ordinance itself is very short. That's why we just have highlights here.
It's basically no signs in the right of way except for polling places during an election period, which is early voting and election day. No signs on city property. Private property, we don't regulate.
Does it make reference to the state?
No.
It does not, well, that would screw it up.
No, because your ordinance mirrors the state's. There's two, there's two tickets I could give. I could write you a citation for violating the state law, or I can issue a ticket for violating a local law.
But our ordinance ought to make a reference to the state law. And if it doesn't, I'm saying that ought to be just an amendment to it.
Okay. The whole idea, someone probably won't go look at the state law, because they won't be able to find it.
Give them the URL in the, in the ordinance.
I think, I think whatever, whatever the state law is, I think what we're saying should be the same, because what happens is, we're having one election, and it's not municipal, and they do whatever they want to do. And then when we get to municipal election, our things are even tighter. So then we're like, we can't do this, but the election just happened, and they can do everything they want to. So I think if we followed that state law.
Yeah.
Then for both.
Here's the problem, you're going to have political signs all over the place, because the state law does not regulate political signs in the city of Duncanville right of way.
I agree.
So we can make a statement that, you know, referencing what the state law is, and the state law does apply to the city of Duncanville. The city of Duncanville hereby applies the state law to its city limits in terms regarding to political sites.
So you're going to allow political signs in the right of way?
No.
Yes, that's what, state law does not regulate the signage on city of Duncanville public property. It only regulates political signage on private property, unless it's state right of way.
State right of way.
State right of way.
Oh, there's a kicker. So we've got to say city right of way.
So you've got to, you have to have a local for our public property.
All right, now it's, okay, now we're, now we're making progress.
And then on private property, the state law says that you can allow it, but it can't be any more restrictive than 36 square feet or eight feet in height.
So we need to say that something references the city of Duncanville right of way.
That's why we just, because it's, it's user-friendly, because we put the state regulation in our ordinance, and you can look in there and go, okay, I can't have a sign any greater than eight feet in height and 36 square feet. Okay, I can read that, because that's the same regulation the state has, and then I can't put any signs out in the right of way, except for on polling place day or during the election.
Now, our current ordinance does talk about the right of way. It's an offense for any person leaving any political electioneering sign or literature on public property or public right of way.
Right.
Except it's provided, so our ordinance already addresses.
Correct. You're correct.
So what are we talking about?
My, my. Nothing.
Mayor? Well, you could be less restrictive and allow it.
No, absolutely not.
If you don't want to do that.
I just believe that what, the reason we brought this back was the fact that there were questions last year, and we wanted to make sure that it's clear, concise, and then we would bring this back to you as an updated ordinance if people had any feedbacks of changes. If you have no changes or desires, I'm just working with our attorney to make sure all the language is clear, then we would, I think we need to repeal, is that correct? The other, because there were some references to, and unfortunately, Kristen is not here, to a different ordinance that was used last year versus the one that was the most up to date.
Ms. Veracruz.
Did you have your head up first?
Well, yeah, my question was just, is there, were there some specific issues with the current ordinance that the staff wanted us to consider? I mean, is there anything specific, because?
The only thing, you know, a lot of states just kind of follow what the state does, you know, we have our polling places identified, illustrated, which is a little different. The only thing I saw was the protection of the, your VAM, your visibility areas, your triangles, the 25-foot triangles, protect those intersections, which might be a benefit here, given our plating situation. Some properties are platted, some are not. It would give us kind of a defined area to keep the intersections clear, even on private property, would protect that situation.
Yeah, Ms. Veracruz.
Thank you, sir. I believe in the candidate packets. I don't know, I don't remember what it says specifically, but it does not give you definite timelines of when you can start posting, putting signs out, et cetera. So I think that was half the problem, is even your candidate package is not clear.
Yeah, the coverage must be removed, 72 hours, some are 48, some are that same day, you know? Do we want to cap? It sounds like they were on property for too long, more than what was comfortable. I wasn't here.
Are the state.
You're right, nothing, I don't think any of you were here, but like, we had one issue, and it, and it just comes with people thinking they know what they're doing, and they're sticking their sign up in front of the library for, and it wasn't supposed to be there at that time, and it wasn't being enforced, and it wasn't being addressed.
I'm guilty myself of not doing it right, but I didn't have specific, you know, when I first started. And then I know that, I think it was last year, some of the candidates, as soon as the signup period was over, they started putting out signs and in the right of way. So it wasn't real clear.
Mm-hmm.
And so there was a lot, you know, not going on.
Okay, so the packet information was kind of, okay.
Mayor Gordon, I'm back. If y'all had any questions for me, sorry.
Would you ask her what the problems were?
I think we got it covered, Doug. We need to make sure that the ordinance specifies right of way within the city of Duncanville.
And we also need to specify when election signs can go up, and also we need to repeal the other ordinances, because there's a lot of ordinances out there right now that state different things on political signs. So we wanted to make it one big, concise ordinance.
Well, what you, what you have, I've had to answer this question for Councilman Contreras recently, because he had somebody put up a bunch of flags. These aren't elect by for council or elect me for president or anything like that. So when does a sign become a political sign? Oh my God. All right, so what if it says, anti-abortion sign? Don't, I'm just picking a political issue. You're going to tell me I can't put that up? Good luck, First Amendment? You're going to lose. And so one of the things that we've got a problem with is, what is a sign?
What is political sign?
What is a political sign? Is it a Black Lives Matter flag? Yep, I think so. We've got a bunch of regulations about banners and flags. That's where the confusion comes, because if I have a flag that says, elect Joe Veracruz, and if I have one that says Black Lives Matter and it's on, now you got a problem. You tell me I can't put that sign up before, after election, or it's elect Mayor Gordon, and I want to put my sign up today, I don't care if he's declared or not, I love it, and I want him to get running again. That's the problem. And I, cities have these, no more than, you know, 75 days before the election and no later than 15 days after, but I think it's unconstitutional.
Greg and Mr. Contreras.
I just want to mention that where the state law addresses what is allowed and what cities can't prohibit on private property, nowhere in that state law does it say when those types of signs can go up or have to come down. So on that basis, they could conceivably be year-round, political signs on private property. We can't do anything about that.
You can say election signs, but you know, if, I mean, there's still Trump 2020 signs, and it's political signs. It's hard to.
What does it say about timeframe in our current?
Nothing.
It was, you got to pick them up after, 72 hours after.
So that's a different document. That's why we said there are multiple ordinances.
Yeah.
Too many things, and so that's where the lack of clarity has come from, is that when, and Kristen's here, and I remember last year, I just started, the issue was, we had, she had the candidate's form, passed out a document with an ordinance. People received that information, and somewhere along the way, we discovered that that was not the correct document. And so we had to go back and contact everyone to say, we gave you the wrong document.
So what's in the packet sitting out there right now?
Ms. Kristen?
And the packet sitting out there right now is this ordinance that is shown on the screen. However, when you go to MUNICODE and you go and you look political signs up, you can get two, two or three other ordinances. And they, they talk about when the polling location, you can put them up when it becomes a polling location, so that's when early voting starts. But it has no, no information in there saying when it needs to come down, when it needs to go up, except for the 72 hours after election day. And that was a big confusion last year. And then, you know, on the right of ways was a huge one, too, because there's no way for us to verify that the right of ways, people are giving permission on the private property on right of ways.
If it's right of way, it's not private property, it's right of way.
That's right.
It's ours, to control. So if my right of way crosses your land, and it's a street, and it's within our 60-foot, it's ours to control. It's not our land, but it's ours to control.
So we have ordinance, going back to the timeframe, we do have an ordinance somewhere, somehow this ordinance says 75 before and 72 hours after.
Well, technically. Well, technically, the way the ordinance is written, once the polling place closed, the signs gotta come up. Because it's no longer a polling place, once polls are closed. The way it's written right now, it says, when they're polling places, technically they need to pick them up every night. So at seven AM at early voting, you should pick all your signs up. We don't do that because it doesn't make sense.
People do complain about that.
They do complain about it. Because it's pretty trashy looking in almost every city.
What's written about the time prior to an election?
None.
We have nothing. All, Kristin said we got a bunch of stuff out there. So in that bunch of stuff out there, we have nothing in terms of a timeframe preceding the election.
If it's not a polling place on private property, but on public property, you can never put one up unless it's polling place. So the two weeks before during early voting, election day, runoff, early voting, you can put your signs up on those spots that are illustrated on there.
But on private property, there is no limitation on timeframes?
No. If you have a political message and it involves conveying it on a fixed object, to me, that's a sign.
Keep in mind, that question you're asking is about a state law. Because the state regulates signs on real private property.
It says political signs on private property can be no higher than eight feet and no more than thirty-two square feet.
Period.
But it said, and it says, "City can't regulate that" if you're within those parameters. If it's higher than eight feet, yes, we can regulate that. If it's more than thirty-two square feet, we can regulate that.
And by not mentioning in that state law that a time limit, you can only assume it's fair game year-round to have a sign up.
I think it's First Amendment issue.
Well, it could be. And the other thing is that, and it gets confusing. And I know oftentimes, when, last year when Esther gave the presentation, she hit on it pretty good. But it's too hard to understand what the right of way is. So when you say somebody's giving you permission to put a sign up in your front yard, your front yard ends eleven and a half feet behind the curb. That's public right of way. So no one can give you permission to put it there. But for the code enforcement or neighborhood services people to go out and try to establish that with an angry homeowner that says, "By golly, I'm putting my sign right up here by the sidewalk", that's a tough one. But it's on the books that we don't allow signs on public right of way. And it gets even hairier when you get up in my neighborhood where we have no curbs and gutters. Now the private property line or the right of way line is all over the place. Could be ten feet, could be fifteen feet. So it gets complicated. So that's why in residential neighborhoods, other than really flagrant sign, political sign violations, you're probably better standing off a little bit.
Well, that's why, to me, this entire issue is not about private property, it's about right of way.
That's a good way to look at it.
I'm not even thinking about somebody putting a sign on somebody's yard. What do you live in? Forget, I'm not going there. It's too hard to enforce. We don't even wanna go there, upset anybody. To me, it's all about the right of way. How can we keep our right of way clean and not allow signs? And the right of way within the city limits?
Because right now you allow no signage in the right of way. Not just political signs, none of the other kinds of signs. So what code enforcement does is they go pick them up and either throw them away or hold them hostage at the service center.
But is it fair in the rewriting of this to consolidate whatever we got out there into one coded document to just make that particular statement?
Well, the problem is, we talk about banners and flags and feather signs and all other kinds of temporary signs. And the word "political signs" got put in there, which probably needs to come out. You know, when you get three flags on a, you know, you can have three flags on your property, but I suggest other than a national flag, it's crazy. And the political signs probably needs to come out of the signage thing. Because the Supreme Court has now told us that when you distinguish a business sign from an education sign from a political sign, that's content. And what can you not do? You can't regulate content.
Can staff not come up with two city managers, just a draft for us to look at? And we make the recommendations then? I mean, it should be pretty simple at that point.
Absolutely. It doesn't sound like it has to be too complicated. We know what we want. Just take all the stuff, put it into one that makes it nice and clean. And even a lawyer could understand.
Yeah. So what we need to do is drop it out of the other temporary signs, I think. Make it clear that we just call them political slash election day signs. Because not every election day sign is a political sign, but not all political signs are election signs. And there seems to be...
And just make sure it's election period. It's not just municipal election, it's election all year round.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So during the national election, they get to put up the presidential signs and the US senator signs and the rep signs and the county signs. Yes, sir.
Gotta go in that direction.
I think, I'm looking at the municode. We're gonna work with our attorney. I think the terminology we're gonna move away from is the word "political", moving to "election signs", because political can take on any meaning. And then we will go back. If anyone thinks of something that they've experienced that was unclear or that they desire, what I'd ask, if you send this information to me, I will work with our team and our city attorney to bring something back to you. Because we wanted to get this confirmed and consolidated before we officially kick off this election season.
I do like the seventy-two hour piece of removing the sign.
From private property? Still focusing only on right of way?
After the election. Seventy-two hours removed. Well, we would hope that they're not putting up any signs in the right of way, seventy-two hours, before or after the election, unless it's polling.
Just wanna remove.
Good enough. Okay.
We've got a march north.
Alright, thank you very much.
I got one more thing, sir. How does that work with city and school? I know when we had town halls, you could put, so would you address that too somehow?
Government signs. If we put them up, they're government signs under the ordinance. We shouldn't probably violate our own ordinance.
So just a question of timing. Filing starts tomorrow, ends the eighteenth of February. We're gonna have something as a city council to put into effect, like the moment?
We were asked to speed bringing this back to the next meeting. That's why we wanted feedback. We've already started work on it, but we wanted to get any feedback in a briefing format before bringing it to you on the agenda.
Okay.
February the first, the next council meeting?
Yes, I think it's around that date.
Alright, that concludes our briefing and work session. Unless there's any further comments? Oh, no, that's fine. Okay. So we're gonna adjourn this briefing session at six-twenty-three? And I'm gonna go out there and make an announcement to anybody who's there.
You're gonna go ahead and start your council meeting.
I can't hear you.
And you're gonna go ahead and start your council meeting?
Yes, that's what I'm gonna announce.
Yep.
The way it's written is just that the regular session may be called media discussion.
Okay.
Is it all the time?
Normally we're the other end.
Normally you could say you could start at seven.
Well, sometimes it's...
It says seven o'clock, regular session.
Yeah, normally you could start at seven, that's what you, that's what you say.
Well, normally I would say that unless the agenda serves differently.
Oh, or immediately following.
Oh, she said she put them out over there.
I did, but then I went to go get it so I could bring it here and it wasn't there. Oh, it's over here?
Here, let's go get and read this thing. Okay.
Because it wouldn't make any difference.
And some cities require that you set around...
You're right, there.
Hold it, hold it more.
I thought we wanted to sit just over there.
Well, they ask that they do it so... Oh, I said, yeah.
I don't understand what you're talking about.
Are we broadcasting?
We are broadcasting.
Okay, just for the record, for the recording purposes, City Manager Farrell Benavides and I did go into the city council chambers and notified the citizens that are there that we will not be moving out of this particular room into normal city council chambers. We will conduct the city council meeting where we sit for technology purposes primarily. So I saw there were only three citizens out there. The rest were staff members. And we did inform them that if they do wish to speak, and I do have some citizen comment cards, they will be called into this room and escorted in by Assistant Police Chief Matt Stockner. They will say their what they need to say. There will still be time for two minutes, and they'll be escorted back into council chambers where they can witness what goes on in this particular room. So all of our citizens have been informed to that effect. So the timestamp, calling to order our regular session of the city council meeting for January the 18th, 2022. Timestamp on that is 6:33. And if we would all please rise, Mayor Protem Hart.
Let us pray. Dear God, our heavenly Father, we worship and magnify your holy and righteous name. You created all things by the power of your word, and by the power of your word all things are held together. We're thankful, dear God, that you gave us your son to redeem us. And we thankful that you instituted this system of government whereby we could experience and enjoy control over our affairs as opposed to the chaos and anarchy that would result without the government that you instituted. And as servants of this provision, dear God, we pray that you would lead, guide, and direct us as we conduct the business of this great city of Dunkerville, that we would do things decently in order that you would provide us wisdom, provide us civility, and direct our path that we might accomplish your heart's desire for this great city. And so we pray for our first responders, not only here, all over the world, our military men and women serving this nation. We pray for their guidance and their protection as well. We pray for every employee under the supervision of this city, that you would give them servants' hearts and give us the lead of servants' hearts, that we might love you more and serve you better. With this, we ask in your son's name and for his sake we pray. Amen.
Well, we know where the flags are. They're that way.
Oh, there we go.
Please join me in the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Please receive it. Moving on to item one, the reports. My mayor's report's going to be extremely brief tonight. Just saying that on January the 26th, I will again have coffee with the mayor in the senior center from 8:30 to 9:30. And all citizens are welcome to come to do that. And I just want to mention on a somber note that the city lost a great man very recently, Mr. Gerald Jerry Slager. And his funeral was yesterday. And if you don't mind, I'd just like to take a moment of silence in memory of Mr. Slager, who contributed so much to our city and to our state as well. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Okay, moving on to council members' reports. Any council members' reports? Mr. Cooks, yes, please.
Just one second here. Just want to remind everybody, normally I meet, connect, and learn. It's this coming Saturday at the senior center and also live on Facebook. We'll be speaking with our Dunkerville ISD superintendent. And so questions for him about the students, questions for him that you may have about the update of the school, please welcome me to join. And you can find that in your neighborhood with a sign up, or you can find that online, or you can join us by Zoom or in person at the senior center. And that starts at nine o'clock, a different time normally. We normally start at 10, but it's from nine to 10:30. And so we invite you to come out and to hear our Dunkerville ISD superintendent. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members' reports? Hey, thank you. See, now the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Parks and Recreation Department will be hosting a membership drive in the month of January. Come in any day Monday through Saturday, and you can purchase a one-year membership for the price of six months. This offer is good for new members and renewing members. Everyone who signs up will get a spin, our swag merchandise will for a chance at a cool prize like a T-shirt, wristband, bumper stickers, and much, much more. Bring your friends and family with you and join us in January for a healthy start to New Year. Also, come and join us for our annual Daddy Daughter Dance scheduled for Saturday, February 19, 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. This is a magical event. We'll bring daddies and daughters together for a special night of music, games, food, and professional photography, who will provide a memorable keepsake. Also, Community Cleanup Day. Our next Community Cleanup Day is February 19, Saturday, February 19, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. This will be on the LAD property at 627 West Daniel Dale. For more information, please contact the Parks and Recreation Department. Also, I'm pleased to announce, as council knows and for our citizens, that we have officially would like to congratulate Chief Mark Lavigne on being named our new police chief. We have scheduled his swearing-in ceremony for Thursday, February 3rd, 2020, and this will be held at the senior center.
2022.
2022. Goodness. February 3rd, 2022. Not yet. I will send more information out on the exact time we will start. Also, as you are aware, we have been in process of now interviewing for our new Information Technology Director. This is now being called our Chief Information Officer, which is a more modern term. I must say that we've had a wealth of applications for this position. I believe we reviewed over 35 applications for this position coming from all over the country. We have narrowed the search down to, I believe, eight individuals who are in the process of being interviewed both last week and this week, and we hope to have that number narrowed down to the final two finalists or three finalists by the end of this week. And we hope to have someone on in the next few weeks. I must say that we've definitely received a lot of interest in this position from some extremely talented individuals. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item number two, proclamations and presentations. Item number 2A is a proclamation recognizing Martin Luther King Jr. Day, January 17, 2022. And this will be presented by Mr. Cooks. Mr. Cooks, please.
I thank you, Mayor. I'll stand on this proclamation. Whereas the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., who was born on January the 15th, 1929, believed in a nation of freedom and justice, and dedicated his life in advancement of civil rights for all through non-ballot means, and challenged all citizens to help build a more perfect union and live up to a purpose and potential of America through public service. And whereas in 1994, Congress initiated the King Day of Service, a nationwide effort to transform the federal holiday honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. into the Day of Community Service, grounded in Dr. King's teaching that helps bring people together and thereby breaking down barriers that has divided us as a nation through contributing their own time, talents, and in the Day of Service. And whereas hundreds of thousands of volunteers in cities and towns across the nation participated in King's Day of Service project in all 50 states and use Martin Luther King Jr. days a day on, not a day off, by spending this performing community service each year. And whereas nonprofit organizations such as Keep Dunkerville Beautiful, volunteer managers, America Corps, Senior Corps members across the nation have organized hundreds of projects of volunteers to engage in service honoring the goals of King Day Service. And whereas the King Day of Service, which falls on January the 17th, this year is an excellent opportunity to take a step in making service a regular activity in the lives of Dunkerville residents as fitting memorial to the life of Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas federal and state legislators has recognized Dr. King's legacy as one of America's outstanding civil rights leaders by creating a federal holiday, making his birthday, and whereas the federal holiday was signed into law 1983 and first observed in 1986, observed each year on the third Monday of January. Now therefore, Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of City of Dunkerville, Texas, do hereby proclaim January 17, 2022, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
Thank you. Moving on to item 2B, a proclamation recognizing the month of January as firefighter cancer awareness month. Councilmember Vera Cruz, please. And receiving this proclamation is Assistant Fire Chief Brick Chase.
Proclamation. Whereas Dunkerville firefighters serve our community by putting the safety of the citizens above their own. And whereas firefighters often work in toxic environments of smoke, carcinogens, and whereas cancer is the most dangerous, under-recognized threat to the health and safety of our nation's firefighters. And whereas firefighter occupational cancer is the leading cause of line-of-duty deaths, professional firefighters and heads reached epidemic levels. And whereas studies have found direct correlation between the chemical exposures firefighters experience on the job and their increased risk for cancer. And whereas 49 states and 12 provinces recognize cancer as a presumptive for workers' compensation claim for firefighters. And whereas early detection of cancer through routine screening leads to earlier treatment and better disease outcomes and inputting improved survival and reduced mobility. And whereas in 2019, more than 75% of the names of firefighters added to the International Association of Firefighters, the IAFF, fallen firefighter Memorial Wall of Honor in Colorado Springs, Colorado, were members who died from occupational cancer. Whereas Firefighter Cancer Support Network, FCSN, and the IAFF have designated the month of January as firefighter cancer awareness month. And now therefore Barry L. Gordon, Mayor of the City of Dunkerville, Texas, joins the IAFF and the FCSN in designating the month of January as firefighter cancer awareness month to bring increased public awareness of firefighter occupational cancer, the effects it has on the fire service, and to bring targeted education about best practices and resources to reduce the impact of cancer within the fire service.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all very much for this. The fire department is very appreciative. For those that don't know, we've lost two firefighters to cancer prior to the IAFF recognizing them on the memorial wall. Captain Ken Wright passed away. Dan Kendall was a driver engineer. He passed away last year, and he is now on the wall. So we certainly appreciate this, certainly appreciate y'all's efforts. We started our cancer screening two years ago. I don't know if y'all were out here over by the Eon Building, seeing multiple fire engines pulling through there back in October. We finalized that. We go through Cedar Hill and DeSoto with that testing company. They set up one spot. They do all three fire departments. So we just want to say thank you all very much.
Thank you, Father.
I would mention that this one touches me personally. Our son's father-in-law was a firefighter here in the DFW Metroplex, and he passed away several years ago as a direct result of his exposure and being a firefighter. It's very moving. And you know, you never know when something touches home, but this one does, so.
And this last testing, it called a couple of things that they're looking at on certain individuals. They're following up with that. Hopefully, if it is something, they'll get it quick. And they weren't going to be here. I'm glad they weren't because of the way you have it set up. But they actually got an actual working structure fire on South Side of Dale right before the alarm started. So they're out there doing their jobs when y'all don't know they're doing it, so.
Mr. Vera Cruz, you have another comment?
Yes, sir. I was going to say, one thing we've done, just as a reminder, as a council, is authorize that second set of professional protective equipment, which once they come out of a fire, they can take that stuff off, shower, clean up, and then put it on a good set while the other sets being cleaned, so. Yes.
Yes, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number three, citizens' input. Pursuant to section 551, 4007 of the Texas Government Code, any member of the public has the opportunity to address the city council concerning a matter of public business or any posted agenda item. However, the act prohibits the city council from deliberating issues out of the public agenda, and such non-agenda issues may be referred to city staff for research. In any future action, all persons addressing are subject to council adopted rules and limitations. Those rules and limitations are that the city of Dunkerville does limit citizens' comments to two minutes. And because we are quasi-remote, but we do have some citizens that are present, I do have some comment cards from some citizens that are sitting out in council chambers. I will invite them in momentarily. I do have some written comments to read as well for the record. The first one I have is simply signed Kate Turner. No address, no telephone number, no additional information. It reads, quote, "I am interested in preserving nature." Period. "I'd like to sign the petition as well." Period. "I am a registered voter." End. The next written comment I have is from Mari Vega. This individual lives in the Deer Chase condos. "Thank you for recognizing me. Good evening. My name is Mari Vega, resident of Dunkerville since 2005, former president of the library board. I would like to speak in favor of preserving national aspects of Dunkerville that can be saved if smart actions are taken by this council and other entities and persons. There's a lovely gift from the LAD family, LAD that has the rare Blackland Prairie and an extension of the Trinity River with beavers. Let's let this be purposed to an Audubon-like nature sanctuary. As the recent presentation to Keep Dunkerville Beautiful Board by the Regional Director of Audubon showed, it makes financial sense to do so. The stewardship aspect of not mucking up something so unique is also important. Greenspaces that are not kept like over-manicured golf courses also have healing psychological benefits, and we all benefit from those now more than ever. Maybe not many of you had the experience of growing up playing in the creek and watching nature in real life. I almost didn't because I grew up in a city of millions. Fortunately, as a youngster, the National Science Foundation sponsored me to study ecology amidst the trees and streams in a nature preserve and gave me the experience of measuring stream flow, counting wildlife, and use of a microscope. So please note the stem slash steam benefits for our children as well. I urge you to please let the growing number of tuned-in voters hear that you are also tuned in and care about our needs on this issue. Thank you. Again, Mari Vega, Deer Chase Condos, 7511. I have two cards from, I know that there's individuals that are sitting out in council chambers. So the first one I'd like to call in is Mac Browning. Assistant Chief Stockner, if you'd escort Mr. Browning in, please. Sitting in, Assistant Secretary, would you run two minutes?
Thank you.
Mr. Browning.
Yes, sir. Mac Browning, 442 East Cherry Street, Dunkerville. Thank you for your time. I would like to mention that it would be much more transparent and accommodating for the city to provide the agenda more than the minimum required time prior to the meeting. Just because it must be supplied at least by a certain amount of time does not mean it cannot be supplied earlier than that. I would like to address item 5A. The rationale given for allowing non-peace officers to issue citations in lieu of arrest, really, a code violation could be an arrestable offense, is that other cities do it, and being a home rule city, we can. That is no reason to do anything. I find it disturbing that we would grant the city the authority to call code violations, misdemeanors, and issue citations, meaning also that if they are ignored, a warrant can be issued for arrest of the resident. Equally egregious is the wording of the rationale of the codes themselves. "Seeks to promote the public health, safety, and general welfare of the municipality and safe, orderly, and helpful development of the city." This is opening a Pandora's Box of overstepping by the city in what they consider health violations. With the council's unwilling willingness to consider an ordinance against vaccine mandates, it leads me to believe they are looking for a way to open the door even further to this overreach in the future. I am appalled and vehemently opposed this ordinance as written, in truth, and ordinance of this type at all. The government does not need more reasons to be in our lives. Just leave us alone. Thank you.
Thank you. The next card I have is from Erica Browning. Assistant Chief Stockner, would you please escort in Erica Browning?
Hello.
Good evening. Please state your name and address.
Erica Browning, 442 East Cherry Street. For the record, I take exception to the metal detector and infringement of Second Amendment. What kind of people do you think Dunkerville is attracting, anyway? Regarding item 5B, ARPA funds, there are so many questions I have, but do not have the time to outline them all. Here are a couple. Number one, premium pay for essential workers. Who decides who is essential? There are workers in our city who provide care for the elderly at residential facilities. There are workers at factories, such as, but not limited to, precise connections, who perform essential duties, especially in light of current supply chain problems. There are many other workers who are more essential than There are many other workers who are more essential than some staff at City Hall, probably. An eligible worker is identified as one needed to maintain continuity of operations of essential critical infrastructure sectors. This includes state, local, or tribal government workforce. Notice it includes government workforce, but is not limited to it. Have other businesses or industries been made aware of these funds and asked whether they need a portion? If not, why not? Number two, small business grants. Only $350,000? With the number of business closures in our city making us look like a ghost town and putting many business owners on welfare, why isn't more being offered to help them? This is more important than some of the equipment being allocated in other line items, such as automated metering. We have months or years to submit our wish list. This agenda item should not be pushed without more interest in how the city can serve the public who are affected, rather than bulk up your own budget. I wish we had time to address each line item because there are specific issues with them all. Unfortunately, the public is not only given three days to view the agenda, but is not given all the information that you are. Why are the council members given more information than we aren't? Is it the council who runs the city? No, it's the people, and we should have the most information in order to be more effectively involved. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes item number three on the agenda, citizens' input. Moving to item number four, the consent agenda. City Secretary, please read the consent agenda items.
Item 4A, consider a resolution authorizing the execution of City of Grand Prairie contract number 21186, an inter-local cooperative agreement with Kirkco Inc. for pavement, crack, and joint sealing services for the prices set forth in City of Grand Prairie contract number 21186 with an estimated expenditure amount of $225,000. Item 4B, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of a backhoe from South Star JCB through Sourcewell contract number 040319/JCB and the expenditure amount of $111,850,000. Item 4C, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase of pavement lifting services from Nor-Tex Concrete Lift and Stabilization Inc., located in Fort Worth through the City of Grand Prairie, contract number 21259, for the unit prices bid with an estimated expenditure amount of $100,000. Item 4D, consider a resolution authorizing the purchase agreement with Tyler Technologies Inc. for annual software support and maintenance from the city ERP system using Sourcewell Cooperative Contract number 090320-TTI in the amount of $296,777.23.
Thank you. Chair, obtain a motion to approve. Mr. McNabb?
I'd like to approve.
Second, second by Mr. Harvey. Based on our format tonight, just for voting purposes, we will do a roll call vote. City Secretary?
Councilmember Barry Cruz, for R, against.
For.
Councilmember McNabb, for R, against.
For.
Councilmember Coons, for R, against.
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for R, against.
For.
Councilmember Contreras, for R, against.
For.
Mayor Pro Tim Harvey, for R, against.
For.
For, thank you. The motion has passed unanimously. Moving on to item for individual consideration, item 5A. Our city charter does stipulate that any member of the city council may request an item be taken into executive session. I am going to exercise that privilege and right and ask that item number 5A be taken into executive session at the end of our regular items. I do not need a vote on that, as far as I understand. Charter is that correct, City Attorney?
That is correct.
Thank you very much. So just understanding, when we finish the rest of our items for individual consent, I'm sorry, individual consideration, we will take up item 5A in executive session. Item 5B, consider a resolution approving the allocation recommendations of American Rescue Plan funding for coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in accord with U.S. Department of Treasury guidelines. Presenting this is Budget Analyst Jennifer Odie. Ms. Odie?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. All right, just a preview to this presentation. I do want to highlight, forgive us for the misunderstanding with including the AMI into the recommendations, we are retracting that out of the recommended items that we are asking for you to consider at this time. So we are retracting that out from the list of the current allocation we are recommending. Just as a reminder, we did bring this for you back in October as an introduction to what the American Rescue Plan Act is about, what eligible items are eligible for uses. We came back to you in December with some discussion and briefing sessions, so this is bringing back to you what we've already discussed in those previous sessions. So as a reminder, the ARPA funds, this was signed into law back in March of 2021. Three hundred and sixty billion of that money was reserved for state and local aid. Sixty-five billion of that was dedicated specifically to cities around the nation. The City of Duncanville is to receive 9.6 million. We've already received the first half of that in August of 2021, so 4.8 million, and we will receive the next half here in the summer, spring time later this year. The funds, we must have committed or obligated what we're going to use those funds for by the end of 2024, and we must completely spend those funds by the end of 2026, or we give it back. The guidance for eligible uses is issued by the Department of the Treasury. They did issue the final rules. They released that back on January 7th, so we have final guidelines which to compare our eligible uses by. So again, the four categories that they have published, so funds should be used for response to COVID-19 or economic impacts, provide premium pay for eligible essential workers, replace revenue loss due to COVID-19, and investments in water, sewer, broadband, and infrastructure. So at this time, what staff is recommending for allocations that we can move forward with the funds that we've already received. Item number one being employee premium pay. We estimate 1.3 million towards that. We are in alignment with, or doing similar program to what the other best office cities are doing. Lancaster's already brought this before their council back in November. City of Soto's already done this as well. We're taking a tiered approach, meaning we are going with the guidelines to ensure that the lower-income paid positions are getting more of the premium pay, and also doing it in two dispersments. So it covers a range of between April 1st, 2020 through March 31st, 2021. So if you were employed during that timeframe, depending on when you were hired, you get a specific allocation percentage. And then doing a second dispersment, April 1st, 2021 through March 31st, 2022. Yes?
So the employee premium pay?
Yes.
Is that a one-time stipend or an increase to their base salary?
It is a one-time stipend, but the guidelines were specific that you had to justify. You go over a specific percentage, 150% is what the number was of the state or the county that they reside in, whichever is greater in terms of the total income. So they use that as a base to, if you're going to go over this percentage, then you must, you know, provide additional justification if you're going to pay someone that pushes them over that amount. If that makes sense. So it's a one-time stipend. It's not an ongoing thing. It doesn't increase their base salary in any way. That was just a guideline of a reference of to, it adds to their, when you're reporting it, if that makes sense. But.
It's based on hours worked and actual work time, and so it'll be calculated going from the past on the hours that they served during that time period. So for example, if someone was not employed at the city on April 1st through May, March 31st, they're not eligible. If they were there half time, they're eligible for half of the amount in their pay category. So it is designed, the lower your salary, the more you're eligible for, the higher your salary, the less you're eligible for.
I'm going to have a question on the next session, next session of that small business grant, and I will probably need to hear from Augustine.
Yes.
Gus Garcia. There he is.
Before you pass, would you, just for the sake of citizen, define premium, define employee premium pay, and then reinstate one more time, who will be receiving this premium pay?
You said the premium pay, all city workers are eligible. Clear in the guidelines, you know, the workforce of the government are the eligible employees. Again, essential workers being the ones that, you know, continuity of service, you have your public safety, if you're fire, you have your police, they're out on the roads, they're the ones, you know, being in contact with people day to day, your service center folks, people out on the road, paving the streets, your CSRs, you know, people that are the ones that are, you know, facing, you know, the public each and every day. Those are your, you know, your essential workers.
So essential workers are all city employees are considered essential, otherwise they would not be here. And so as we have the opportunity, and in some cases you actually had the opportunity with your CARES fund, to provide additional services, because as they come and interact with the public, they are exposed each day. So this is considered, in some cases, they call it hazard pay, based on their duties and their service. And so this is very clear, unlike the original funding of how you can disperse it. You see higher levels for your public safety workers because of their risk, but we also find our water and sewer employees are also people we don't even think about when you think of your utility billing individuals and the folks who interact with the public. And so therefore, this is a way of federal government allowing us to make sure that we are, I don't want to say rewarding, we are thanking or giving some type of consideration to the risk that each of our city employees have faced being here. And so that is how they've divided it up so that we can go back and do last, when it first began until this section, and then the next section, so. But this is actually established based on looking at it in our case for us to utilize for our employees. Now, we are going to have, and there are other folks who have, we are going to be giving, talking about a small business grant next. If our private sector individuals want to do those things, those are some of the ideas that they can do. But this is specifically focusing on our employees, those who've been out there, frontline workers, and the workers behind the scene.
And would you define one more time, why you divide it up in two tiers?
We divided up, we actually just followed the suit of the other cities in the area. They divided up into two dispersments. You could have, because we're going to get two dispersments of funding. We'll receive 4.8 and then another 4.8, and so we wanted to cover through the timeframe in which, and just dividing it up for that reason.
It's two dispersments, but several tiers.
Yes.
As noted in our package.
Tiered approach.
The tiered approach is based on your length of employment.
And salary.
And your salary. The higher the salary, the lower the stipend, the lower the salary, the higher the stipend, which is detailed. So yeah, it's a little, reading that real quick, it looks like it's two tiers, but it's two dispersments.
Well, yeah, I want to restate that for citizens' sake.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, so just to be clear on the tiered approach, so we broke it up by, you know, if you're making less than 50,000, you get the highest amount possible, and then 50 to the, to that cap.
Do you know the amounts that you can share with citizens?
Yes, 3,000, premium pay, again, one-time stipend. So if you make 50,000 or less, that's at the end of March 31st of 2021, in the first dispersment, then you get $3,000 stipend. 50,000 up to the 81, 785, again, it has to do with that, that annual average income. They get 2,500, and then anything over the 81, 1,500. And then it also is a percentage based on, so if you were hired at the end of 2021, you wouldn't be eligible for the first dispersment, you'd be eligible into the second.
Mr. Contreras and Mr. Cruz.
Yep. Okay.
City Manager, you said that the, all city employees were eligible.
Yes.
Does that mean that all city employees are going to receive these benefits?
If they fall in this category, yes. This is a, they have calculated this across the board.
What category?
If they fall into being employed, so based on hire date and based on their salary. So let's say, for example, any employee earning under 50,000 will be eligible for $3,000 in premium pay. But the key is, they will be eligible for it based on when they were employed and the time in which they served. If they were employed before April 1st, 2020 through this time, they're eligible. If they're no longer employed, they're not eligible. But anyone before April 1st, 2020 will receive 100% of that 3,000.
Okay, help me out with this. This may sound worse than I intended to be, but there are some employees that have a greater exposure during this time period, a much greater employee than other staff members. And how do you draw the line? If you just, if everybody gets it just from the mere fact that you're coming and showing up for work, and I realize that coming to work is a risk in itself, this isn't really based on exposure to threat levels, because some are definitely at a higher exposure rate. So just explain that to me.
I will say that I've looked at it in a number of tiers and even considering the fact that our public safety employees will be placed at a different level of eligibility. Just working with the other city managers in the region, I wanted to just say consistent. And as much as to us, we were thinking that it made much more sense to say, you have your public safety, your public works, and then your general employees. I didn't want to cloud it, I didn't want to make it too complicated, but we do recognize that there are some individuals who are at greater risk, and it just, it was a simplistic term, and I just wanted to make sure, and making a recommendation with you, that it fell in line with what we were seeing around the area. So that's the only reason we did not. Our initial consideration, and initially, when we talked about premium pay, essential and hazard pay, it was strictly focused on public safety, we thought of police and fire. But it became more apparent as time passed by that our inspectors, our meter readers and those individuals were also, and so as we started to try to figure it out, and even when it came to your utility billing collection individual, it became complicated, and so this was just a simplified form, not saying that there is not a greater risk for some individuals than others.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. Actually, Councilman Contreras, question, pretty much covered most of my question, I guess, just getting back to trying to make sure, again, all employees, all city employees are eligible. So we're talking about everything from police, fire, to rec attendant, to employee, to library?
Every employee in the city is eligible for this. And so everyone, we consider a essential worker from our rec employee, but it is based on working. So it's not if you were off or on vacation, that takes away from, so there are things that are calculated into that.
I guess, I just want to, again, kind of like with Councilman Contreras, this sounds probably different than what I mean when we look at the criteria for what the definitions for an essential worker, just making sure that those who are, and do they have to go through any kind of application process? How are the selections, how are the selections made?
There is not a selection, and I was just looking online, because for example, the National League of Cities talks about how you do it, and so there's been lots of guidelines and conversations of basically, what do we do and how do we handle this? I think it's important to do this. And so HR will take their database and calculate, and actually have, that's where this number came from, the individuals who were employed during this timeframe, and so we know who that group is. The next section is identifying the salary gains. The issues you find in some cases is, the salary issue is the biggest criteria that kind of defeats the, affects the public safety process, because when you look at your higher salaries, they are in the public safety arena. And so therefore, if you look at the 50% and the calculation, we're going to lose half of our police and fire, just based on salary alone. And so that's the other reason that not differentiating there and just going for the overall approach of salary to ensure everyone is included. I think that the city did a remarkable job, given the challenges they've had, and even acknowledging, for example, when we think of parks and rec and figuring out creative ways to continue the program, the city services had to continue through this. And so this is a way for the city to make sure, and that's why the federal government identified, to recognize the fact that they continue to operate, so.
And just for the sake of transparency to the public, would we be able to get specific numbers, how many employees fall into each of the specific categories?
Absolutely. I will make sure you have that information.
I would think, I would think that that number is not going to be the exact number when we finally get through the end of the process.
Right. This is over, you know, from my estimation. So in the first tier, or the first dispersment, I anticipate about 250 employees that are still here, you know, and that served during that timeframe, and the next batch, about 250 employees, so.
And just to remember, because in some areas, we do have turnover, and so I think looking at last year, I think we had around 78 to 80 people who may have changed jobs for whatever reason. Well, if you're not employed at the time of the dispersment, you are not eligible for it, and so that cuts down, even though we may have 200 employees or 250 employed, the numbers. The same thing is to be stated. The same thing is to be stated for the next batch, because basically, you must be employed at that time to be eligible.
Mr. Contreras, a good point.
One last point. So, this particular category, employee premium pay, is 1,300,000.
That is the amount we're allocating, we're not sure if it'll spend, it'll be that total amount, but that was based on their initial calculation of how much it would take for that, and two dispersments, so, and two parts. So about 650,000, 600 for the first, 100 for the second. Right, and that's including taxes and all that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one, one comment that I think was made important, that not only has the National League of Cities tried to interpret what the federal government is pushing in the guidelines, Texas Municipal League has issued documents, the National City Council of Mayors has issued guidance on trying to understand and interpret what is helped and what is intended by the uses of these monies. So, your, our concerns are on this table, our citizens as well, in terms of subjectivity, it has merit, but the objectivity, in terms of being able to apply this and understand it and quantify it, as Mr. Coates said, you know, can we, we'll see these actual numbers, how they're going to be moving, that objective quantification actually is to our benefit rather than sign to say, well, this individual did this, and then let's give them a shade more. That's the most difficult thing to justify. In fact, there is justification required in the federal guidelines. You have to write down and justify certain things, if you're going to do something a little different. So this objectivity and the objective quantification, we appreciate that. You know, yeah, we'd like to be able to play this just a little bit better and say, you know, firefighters get a little bit more, police get a little bit more, building inspector, whatever, however, but that gets into such a difficult mire, it would be hard for us, it'd be hard for our staff to figure it out. Nonetheless, we try to understand it as well when it comes to our decision process.
Mayor, we will provide you the final calculations if this is approved. We will come back to you and just let you know how many people, because what will happen is, from that first estimation, we will be able to, any funds that are not expended, reallocate that for other projects. And so, we will constantly come back to you to let you know where we're going in each of these, because the thing that we recognize is, the goal is to move this community, this money within our community and to do the things that the city needs.
Right, the next item is small business grants, something that, as Mr. Garcia has worked on. We're allocating 350,000 for that, including nonprofits in the community, may also be considered for receiving grants. We pretty much just utilized the criteria that was established by the county, the county has already pushed out a similar program, and I'll let Mr. Garcia speak again.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager Gus Garcia with.
One moment, please, I'm not sure you can be seen on camera.
Which one here?
Oh, got it, okay, you're good, just want to make sure. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Augustin Garcia, Managing Director for Development Services, City of Dunkerville. As Ms. Otte just mentioned, the small business grant allocation we're asking for is 350,000. The criteria were based on, basically seven criteria, we wanted to keep it simple. Obviously, this is designed specifically for small businesses, businesses that have an annual gross income of 1 million dollars or left, less. There were seven criteria, one of them was they had impacted since March 1st of 2020, where they can show a 25% reduction in revenue. It's basically to help them with lost employees, businesses that have closed down, small businesses specifically. We also identified a number of other criteria, which, like Jennifer had mentioned, were based on what the county had done, and we wanted to keep it very simple, so that it was somewhat uniform with what other entities are doing. Some of the criteria are, have experienced a loss of 25%, as I mentioned, have closed during the pandemic due to COVID-19 and income-related losses. Tax-exempt businesses, we did include, we felt that that would be important. Some other entities are not including tax-exempt businesses, but we felt that, you know, tax-exempt businesses have been affected as well, and they are considered small business, meaning that they have less than 100 employees. And so, those are basically the seven criteria, and they also have to be in existence by March 1st of 2020, and exist in the city of Dallas and be registered with the state.
Not Dallas, this is Dunkerville.
I'm sorry, City of Dunkerville, have you registered with the state? I apologize, thank you very much. So, really, the, the program is, is established to help small business, and help them with some of the issues they've dealt with. So, you have any questions I'm ready to answer?
I want to say equally there, I just want to say, we have, if we find we have more need, we can increase it because we're not allocating all of the funds.
I was going to say, the, Mr. Harper just. The estimation of 350,000 with a max of 35,000, I noticed in the package.
It's a max of 15,000.
Per grand.
Per grand, per grand.
Oh. It's a one. It was a blurry one, I thought it was a three, never mind.
And one other point is, if, if there's a business that wants to apply, right now, we have had some inquiries, some businesses have asked for us, we've been waiting on this, on this day, we have been directing them to the county, where they can apply as well. So if they receive funds from the county, they would not be eligible for funds from the city, and vice versa. If they receive it from the city, they would not be eligible with the county.
In fact, I received a phone call from someone outside the city, in terms of our awareness of what the county is doing, and I said, we're very close touch with what the county is doing. In terms of being able to identify the businesses and assist the businesses from what we can, if we can't assist them totally for what they need, we have a direct contact in Judge Jacob's office on how to assist us and how to help them to provide more assistance to small businesses as well. And Mr. Harper, you had a question, sir?
Yeah, so, the criteria that, that you stated a few moments ago, how different is that from the criteria that was established under the CARES Act? Because in listening to this, I'm thinking, okay, this is kind of like an extension of the CARES Act, if nothing else in terms, nothing else other than in terms of trying to help local businesses? So, and you don't have to go point by point, but are, are the criteria for eligibility in this program substantially different from CARES?
Well, I would say the one, the one issue that I think this one is, it's much more streamlined, it's much easier to apply, whereas the first round of funding with the, under the CARES Act was very simple, you submitted to your bank, bank went ahead and reviewed it, and then you were able to get funding through certain entities that were authorized to loan out the money as a loan. This is a straightforward grant, if you meet the criteria, the seven that I mentioned, it's very straightforward, you're eligible and qualified. Whereas the other one, it was either a loan or a grant, and there was significant amount of oversight on the issue, whereas this would be a straightforward grant that we'd allocate based on meeting the seven criteria. So I think it's a much more straightforward, easier grant to apply for, that makes, helps a small business not get too caught up in some of the weeds, we just got to make sure to get it right on the application process. And so through that process, we'd have an application online, make it easy and streamlined, we'd basically mimic what the county is already doing, so we already have a model that we can follow. So, it'd be very simple, just submit, we'd review their financials, make sure they meet the criteria, and as I mentioned, it's, it's probably much more streamlined and easier to get qualified for the funding.
The reason why I ask that question is because I have heard of instances in which the problems with the CARES Act was that there were so many stipulations attached to it, that it was, it was hard to get the small businesses the help that they needed. So, I was curious as to how this, this new round compared to that round, and just based on, you know, in your experience working here in Dunkerville, how successful do you think this program would be in terms of our local businesses?
Well, I think it's going to be a matter of two things, one is going to be our ability to reach out to the local community, which we now have the software to be able to do that and reach out and send out surveys and information. Secondly, it's going to, we have a list of all 1,500 businesses within the county, and for a large majority of them, we have emails. So we're able to reach out to them through the Blue Dot software that we were able to purchase this past year, so that has a list of all 1,500 businesses within the city, contact information, et cetera, so we'll be able to send those out and get feedback, and we'll be able to report back to the city to know, and this is what we're receiving, whether or not they're interested or not. Number two, this one is much more streamlined and easier to apply for, whereas before, there was a significant amount of calculations and information that the small business owner then at times became complex, and even then, once you submitted, you didn't know where you were. And there were times where there were too many applications and not enough funding, whereas this is going to be a little bit easier, more streamlined, and we're asking for 350,000 because we want to see where this goes. If we exhaust the funds, as the city manager mentioned, we can certainly come back to council for additional funding. I believe we have to designate by 2024, so.
Yes.
There's time to be able to come back and ask for additional funding, if we've exhausted them all. On top of that, as I mentioned earlier, the county also has funding available. So, if we, in the interim, if we do run out, we can also direct them to the county, until they run out, obviously. And any, any business in Dallas County where we fall in would be eligible.
And Gus, you may mention, the last funding, the CARES funding came as an allocation from the county, and they set the criteria. This was a direct allocation from the state via the federal government, and so it has become a lot less stringent. And so I, I remember getting, I got a federal ruling on some of the criteria when people questioned it, and the federal government was very vague. I think that's the lessons learned from the CARES funding, is in some areas, they were vague and it left it to interpretation. Here, they've been a little bit more elaborate, but the one weakness that we saw, especially in Texas, was that in some cases, some counties and some areas made it so stringent, people were afraid to ask for it, and so we have to be able to not only communicate with them, but also assist them and make this process as simple as possible.
And, and I bring that up because, at the time that CARES came out, I was associated with another city, and I can remember having conversations with staff over there, how the businesses in, in that community felt like, oh, there's so much red tape involved, we're trying to get this money, and blah, 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 blah. So, and I'm not saying blah, blah, blah to be dismissive, but just on and on and on, and that's why I asked the question.
So regarding to our seven criteria, if I may, it's basic, did you, were you open for business as of April 1st, 2020, number one? Are you a business in the city of Dunkerville? Are you registered? Were you impacted by the CARES Act for, did you have to pay for, you know, for masks or for partitions? Did you, were you impacted by COVID by showing a reduction in revenue? These are very, very simple. Are you less than 100 employees? Did you have less than 1 million in annual revenues? I mean, these are very straightforward questions that we can easily determine by looking at a set of financials, and also if they're registered with the state. So I think that makes it as streamlined as possible, and incidentally, this is what the county's doing in other cities across the, across the state. So with that being said, as long as we're able to get them to come in, we should be able to streamline fairly well.
Mr. Contreras and Mr. Coates.
You may have personally answered my question here. It doesn't appear that, that you anticipate a large number of people coming and applying?
I was cautious, but I was conserving my number. As of today, we've had five inquiries about the ARPA funding. So I wanted to be, I'm sorry.
Well, at, at this rate, if everybody maxed out, I know they don't max out.
23 applications.
You got 23, yeah, and that doesn't seem like that's going to be enough.
Well, like I said, in over a period of approximately five months, we've had five. And so, and I'm assuming that not everyone will, will qualify for the 15,000.
Is, are the words already out there?
Well, we, not yet, because we haven't had it approved yet.
But it's known at the, there's been a lot of talk about the funding that has gone to cities, so, business owners are aware that it exists from a specific outreach, from our standpoint, until this was approved, or our council had a chance to consider that they wanted to do it, we have not done a massive advertising, which is what we will do. We will be reaching out to our businesses, and our job is to make sure we get it out there, but I think he did mention, 15 is the max available, it means, there may be lesser amounts that are allocated, and that's part of what they will do.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, I imagine once we advertise and once it's out there, we'll probably get quite a few apps, applications.
Mr. Cooks and Mr. Coats.
I, I would hope so, I know from the last time, we did chat, it was very challenge of getting people to come in, and I know personally, I went out to talk to businesses to encourage them to come to apply. And then having some experience in PPP, most companies right now are doing fairly well after receiving that first batch. So I'm almost thinking your number may go down a little bit if people apply, and if that's the case, is there a, is there an opportunity to come back later and to tweak that, that criteria to open up a little bit more? Because as I mentioned before, working with PPP, most of those have gotten their funding, and they're not showing a shortage at this point, until it was two, till 2.1, the challenge of us advertising, I think I just heard the city manager mention it, so I love that part, because people didn't know about it. Actually, I put it, one of the signs we put out, it was, it was a sign put right in the medium for a business, and she never, she never even saw the sign, but she finally came in and applied and got PPP, the grant. But the other part, though, is, I'm just afraid that that number that you're looking at may be shorter, because at this point, and being back in the banking industry, it's just, I've, now I've seen where the requests have shrunk a little bit more, and so.
So, to, to echo what the city manager mentioned, that the criteria that the federal government gave us was very broad. I'm not an attorney, so I don't want to, I don't want to pine on what the criteria and what we could not do, but it's very broad in what we're able to do, so. With that being said, I'll leave that to you, the city manager or the attorney.
Okay.
To respond.
Mr. Coats.
I want to hear that response, if it's, if you have something to my question.
No, I, I think that the county's criteria is their criteria, there is nothing that stands that we have to, we just try to echo and mirror, we'll also check with our neighboring cities to see how they're handling this, and if they're completely following the county. Our goal is to get the funds in the hands of our businesses in Dunkerville, and so we will do whatever it takes to make sure within the law, that we are making these funds available to people.
Right, so my question is, if we find all of the seven, that is great, I'm just, I'm just hoping that.
If you have four or five due to this.
Four or five, we need, we need to make some kind of adjustment.
We have that discretion.
All right, thank you.
So, I know this has been said once or twice before, I just want to make sure I understand, for the sake of the public's sake, to understand the 350,000, if we find that we need more, that we can allocate more.
We still will have.
That number is not a ceiling that we can't go over.
Just the first allocation we're asking for, we'll be coming back, because as you'll see in this document, there are still funds that we will have to designate by a certain time. I think even with both areas, when I first had this conversation with council, I mentioned to you that I did not want to come too quickly until the final rules came out. Now that we understand the rules, we understand there are lots of other things that we may not have considered initially, that we may find as an eligible expense, and so this is something that we will bring back and, and communicate, and if you identify something that you've seen or heard of, then we can also consider that. So we are not planning to allocate or ask to allocate our additional amount at this time, we want to make sure that we are doing the things that benefit the city the most.
And then also the, the maximum amount of 15,000, was that an amount that?
We said.
We did not say, that's what county, that's what county had, that was their maximum amount.
Okay, so we didn't set that amount, and we couldn't go higher?
You can go wherever you'd like to go, I can say some folks did 20,000, it, it just depends, and it goes back to even like with premium pay, we'll read the criteria to make sure there's not a, it's not an income base, but we will go back and look at it and see if there's a special need and things like that, we just picked something to stay consistent. And as I say, we just wanted to, I hate to say we wanted to do what everyone else was doing, but we wanted to set a guideline that was easy to establish and easy to track, because there are tracking where in the CARES Act funding, there was no federal tracking, they're very clear, in some cases, there are reportings. Now, we are in a special category that we don't, yeah, so we don't have the reporting criteria that DeSoto does, because they got the funding directly from the federal government, but we do expect there will be some, but we don't, we've been exempt, I guess, from the initial reporting.
Well, I, I do want to say, I would be, if we found that there was a need, that I would be in support of raising that to 20,000, at least 20,000, if the need is there. And, but, yeah, I think that's, that's all I have.
Thank you.
A question, Mr. Garcia, you mentioned that with our database, you're aware, or the city is aware of all 1,500 and some odd businesses that are, exist. The final criterion in our package is that have closed during the pandemic due to COVID-19 and income-related loss. Does that database of 1,500 and some odd businesses include those that have closed? Or only those that are current in operation?
Yeah, it would capture any businesses that were registered to state at the time that.
As of March 1st, 2020, based on the criteria.
That's correct.
Okay, all right.
And so, part of that, part of that customer resource management software, not only would we have the name and all the information, somehow we will be, there will be anomalies, we won't have an email for the individual owner, but we'll have an email for the business. So, if we determine that's the case, then obviously we'll do further, we'll reach out further. But the other thing with that is, for every single application we get, and every single account we get, it's going to be logged within the business, so we can, we can readily run a report for, for the council or for the city manager, to show what the progress is and where we're at in the, in the process, to be able to show this is what's happening this is what's happening with each individual business that has applied.
Recognizing closure is the worst possible case.
Right.
And that where I think even hearing the comments, you know, around the table tonight, we are concerned for our businesses. And so even those that have closed, reaching out to them and saying, there's a possibility you can get some money for, they might, what's the word, re-energize them or they might come back and reopen their business, I guess. And we could be a catalyst for, for these businesses that suffered the extreme loss of having to close and bring them back into action. Mr. Collins, Mr. Cooks.
Just, sorry, just one more question. Is this something that they would apply through the EDC board or?
That's how we have it set up right now. For the Business and Services Department. And would go through our board and then obviously would come to city council. Or depending on what the city manager would want, it could go directly to the council for a final approval.
It's up to council. And so we can handle it in-house and give you a report. I don't know if council will want to be responsible for approving which businesses. I think that's more of a staff-type decision, but I do think it would be important to report to you the businesses, just to keep it separate.
How was it with the CARES Act?
The CARES Act, we actually did not use CARES Act money for the small business grants. We went directly out of the economic development fund. So the board. It was 250,000 was allocated.
250,000 directly came out of the EDC coffers, yeah.
And the board had a criteria of how they.
And it was, and it was about the same number. It was about 23 at the end when it went in.
Yeah, just about.
So maybe keep it in the same bucket since this was provided to the city, maybe it goes directly through the city.
Well, we talked about streamlining. If, as the city manager said, you're going to vet these businesses, you're going to vet the applications. We could eliminate the step of having to go through the EDC board, just bring in those recommendations straight here and make it faster for the business.
Treat it like hot funds, if that would be.
That's correct.
Treat it like we do the hot funds, but just come straight here. I think the less conversation, I will tell you that the only thing that I did see because with CARES Fund is just balancing out any kind of, when it comes to those funds, conflicts of interest. And I think it gets real complicated real quickly. And so bringing you the groups based on, here's the recommendation, so that we don't really get into that scary part of why and why not for a certain business.
It would, going to the board would delay it approximately 30 to 45 days.
Right. And so, and that's the impetus here is to get this in the other hand as quickly as possible. So I think we've got consent. Let's just go ahead and move it straight into us rather than delaying it through EDC. Not that they're not important, but it, it's one step that we'll have to encumber.
Yes.
Process with. Okay. One more.
Well, moving on, the next area would be under generators and ventilation replacements and improvements. This is an immediate need we'd like to get going on, especially with the replacement or adding emergency generators in a few of our facilities. Five of our facilities are in need of having generators. Hopefully, we won't have a crazy winter storm again this year, as we did last year, but this would be for our emergency generators as well as adding the adverse weather equipment that the fire department had requested in addition to the emergency generator in case that fails, they'll have a backup. So that total price tag is estimated at 1.6 million for the ventilation systems at the field house as well as the 103 Sweetland as, and the emergency generators. The next one is something to the library and has identified for a program in the community, one being a digital literacy program that'd be offered through the library and a youth leadership program. It's a future leaders of Duncanville program we'd like to give a try with partnership with the colleges around here as well as Duncanville ISD Youth Partnership. And last but not least, please, sir.
So, yeah, I'm sorry, back to the digital literacy. So what specifically, the devices and the equipment, what's specific? Equipment and is there costs that we can see for each?
Right, I mean mainly it is a training program on, you know, the digital program. But as you know, the, the library does have a program where you can rent out a laptop or rent out a, I think an iPad or a hotspot, that sort of thing. So it'd be, you know, inclusive of that program as well as providing.
And that's 50,000 training, yeah.
That's, sorry, that's 50,000, what we came up with for that amount. That could be more, could be less. It's just allocating an amount towards that kind of program.
I guess what I'm asking is, I'd be interested in specifically seeing what, like how many laptops or is it a computer?
This isn't to buy laptops. This is a training program. And so this is, both of these are really training programs, facilitated training. One of the targets of the ARPA funding is to do education enhancement, training, literacy training, digital. What we discovered with our students is that as we moved into this tech generation, there was, there is a digital divide, not only the access to technology, but also the usage and understanding of it. And so literacy has been a big problem. What we're looking at doing with the ARPA funding is to also help to bridge the gap that's been created specifically while students have been homeschooling and separated. So we don't have, we're going to develop out the program and, and we'll bring back more details, but we wanted to allocate and, and give to our library department 50,000 to develop this program. And we can do more information on you and have Julio and his team to come back and talk about what's included in that program.
And also, also too, I would be interested when you all come back with more information, measures of success. How will we know that we have reached the target? What does that look like? So I'd be interested in hearing that.
Absolutely. And we will have, this is what we were hoping and expecting to kind of work with our library department on. And so they would bring this program and we'll do a briefing on you on the program. This is one that we knew that was a target of the ARPA funding. And so we wanted to make sure that we gave them the go-ahead, that we're interested in moving forward with it and funding it. And then they can give us a breakdown and we'll do a program overview for council at that time. The second one, which was a 20,000 program, has been developed. I met with Dr. Seabrooks.
Seabrooks.
Seabrooks, with Dallas College, and he proposed this program to me because a lot of our programs focus on our younger youth, but as we start to look at our young adults and young leaders, as we're calling them, we want a program to talk about not only financial literacy, but other types of areas because part of it is the job training and to deal with that. And so I've been working with him and I've had a couple of meetings with him to talk about this program that they would administer, working with some community partners for our youth, our older youth in Duncanville, to focus on training and other educational opportunities, job readiness, training, things like that, that we know are going to be important because one of the challenges that we're seeing, if we look around our country, is that we have a worker shortage. And so we've got to figure out what it is that's, the gap that's coming between our kids who are in high school and some going to college, but also getting people back into the workforce. And that's been a big focus. And so that's where this project comes from.
And I, and again, I was very, very interested in hearing how that impacted the lives of those people that participated.
Absolutely. And I think you can do, and I've just had a conversation today on this, there's a, there's some online benchmarks that you can test at the beginning to see where their skillset is. And at the conclusion of it, you can also do a test. It works for employees and it also works for our students. And so within that benchmarks of seeing where our students are, from financial literacy to just job training, job readiness. And then at the end of this program, for us to know if this is something worth the city continuing, we will then measure it at the end of that program. And we will have those benchmarks based on the program criterias we talk about, interviewing skills, resume, all those things that we're looking at and then understanding where they are now and then where they are at the conclusion of the program. And we will bring that back for you. And actually I'll have him to come and talk to council about the program if that would be appropriate.
I, I say that because I do agree, given the, given the, the place of the Dallas Fort Worth metroplex within the context of the entire nation, we are, we are one of the most rapidly developing areas consistently in the United States. So definitely, I think workforce development is needed. And I'm, I'm glad to see that we are making our own contribution to such a great need. But I would, I would like to hear the story.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments?
The last item here would kind of more general needs, these are those smaller items, one-time purchases that we can get out the door there. First being the remaining library carols is something that we did in the CARES Act funding. We, the library utilized a lot of the CARES Act funding for, for replacing those, this would replace the remaining. Cellular pump station units, those are out of date and need to be replaced. There's 12 of them. Skater room upgrades, fire EMS cleaning systems, and also body camera and vest for our neighborhood service officers, yes.
Is Greg Rainey here? I would like to allow him two minutes to explain SCADA. Two seconds.
Greg's here? Now I'll explain with SCADA.
Because, because, you know, acronyms, we know what they are, but the general public may not know. So this is a good opportunity.
Two. Got two minutes.
Two minutes, talk about SCADA.
So SCADA is the system that our utilities department uses to monitor the activities of our water distribution system. It controls our pumps, it tells us the volume of water in our ground storage tanks and our above-ground storage tanks. It helps us move water around the city, depending on, you know, flows and demand and, and maintenance. So that's what we use, again, we can do it remotely without actually having to send folks down into vaults and move valves. It's all something that we can do using the computer.
Now, tell me what the word SCADA stands for.
I don't remember what the acronym stands for.
Supervising Control and Data Acquisition. And so it's a control system for water, electric. SCADA systems have been in place for a long time. But what we find is more and more, we've become very dependent on it. As they say, in the olden days, you didn't have the technology. Now the technology's advancing, but we also have to make sure that we keep it up to date with backups and other things within the systems. They've become very, very sophisticated. SCADA systems may run pumping stations all over and sometimes, and electrical systems also. So these are done all over the country.
It is a, it is a key component in managing the integrity of water quality.
Yes, it is.
To us, the system.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rainey. You did two minutes, all right. Good job.
That's first. Not only quality, but availability.
Yes, sir, yes.
And also availability. Okay.
And just, you know, in this category as well, any other items we need to purchase, sanitizer, masks, things like that to help continue to keep our facilities clean and our employees protected.
As a reminder, you remember there were four categories, but one of the categories that they broadened was the revenue loss. So therefore that opened up funding that could be used for items that are necessary for the city that may not fall in one of the four categories of usage. And so that's where you see us talk about, for example, the body care vest for our neighborhood services, our health and our fire marshal, as we've talked about even in our budget process, that's also a safety. If you think of it from a COVID standpoint, when we do contact tracing, we know where they've gone, but we will fund that through revenue savings. SCADA falls into the water system delivery, our fire and EMS cleaning, so.
So after all of that is accounted for and allocated, there's still 5.8 million is left on the table and allocated at this time. We certainly want to follow up with you in the future and reevaluate together, discuss further what are the needs of the community, how can we direct these funds to other programs and things like that.
So, yeah, Mr. Cooks, go ahead, please.
I'm sorry to go back, but on the body worn cameras and vests, there's a recurring cost? What is that?
Yes, this is not a one-time cost. It is a five-year agreement period, so this really covers one year and the rest of it would have to come out of other sources of funding.
We would budget, do you know, it's like 2,500, annual cost for the body camera?
Right, per person is approximately 2,500. Again, it has a five-year agreement, so this is, would be for the first year. And if you wish to.
There's technology tied to it because you not only take the camera video, this video becomes not only evidence, but it also is an open record. And so we will have to store this data on the server and so each day and actually have the policies assigned to it. Police already have the body cameras and we're just expanding it to our other officers, which are like our code officers and marshal and everyone.
So you said 2,500 per person?
Approximately, per person. That's my guess. And this particular need here is 10, so that covers the fire marshal's office, the neighborhood services officer, who's the health inspector, those that currently don't have one.
So my math is not as good as yours. So what's going to be the actual amount we're going to have to budget following five-year?
So it's approximately 2,500 a person, so times 10, I mean, that'd be 25,000 for the first year. So then the second year, it'd be 25,000, the third year would be 25,000. So over a course of five years. And I believe the next item on the agenda is covering that.
Mr. Cooks.
I'm hoping I'm hearing you right, sorry.
My question is a good question of curiosity, because I understand police departments have these cameras and I'm certainly not opposed to them for these other folks, but what if a code or health inspector went into a business and somebody said, I don't want to be filmed? What, what are the issues there?
There isn't any.
There's none? You're coming into my business with a camera?
Well, I'm coming into your business because I am here to, this camera's to protect you against me and me against you. So I'm, I'm wearing it and I'm a recorder.
I'm just curious.
And I'm in here on official business, so I, I might make a suggestion to building code that they put a provision in the permitting process that they have the inspectors, they understand the inspector may be wearing a camera.
Can Mr. Hager's comments, I, I can hear you.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm just wondering if it was clearly picked up for the record in terms of what you're recommending.
Yeah, one of the things that we may want to recommend is put something in the permitting process that indicates the code enforcement officers and the inspectors for this permit will be wearing a body cam and understand they're there for official business during that inspection.
It's a good question. It's a good comment. It's off agenda, but it's okay, we understand that.
Thank you.
Okay. Counsel, before voting, I just want to, there's a, there's a very strong sense that's being voiced around the council in terms of what if we need more? And Ms. Odi commented on that, it was in the PowerPoint here as well. One thing I would point out to all of us, in the proposed resolution, the last whereas, I think covers our concern about being able to get more if we, or give more if we needed. It says the proposed ARPA allocation plan is presented. So with that particular language, it's open-ended. There's no concrete cap on that. And that gives council and staff the authority, I believe, to, to make recommendations in terms of greater allocations over and above what's been estimated for these recommendations presented here. So with that, we do have a resolution before us.
I'll make a motion to approve.
You're voting on all these all together?
So I, I think.
Yes, the ARPA, the allocation of the ARPA funds as presented in items one, two, three, four, five, and six, that you'll demonstrate to. Yeah. I'm sorry, four, four has been eliminated. So it's one, two, three, five, and six is what we're voting on.
You got, we got to approve all or none?
That's the way it's being presented, yes, sir, one bulk package.
I'll make the motion to approve.
You have a motion to approve, Mr. McNabb, and it's seconded by Mayor Protem Harley.
So for example, with the digital literacy program, youth leadership program, so I thought we're going to get some more specific information on that. I'd like to, you know, before I could support that or prove it, it's something I, I think is a good idea, but I'd like to be able to make sure I understand what that looks like as far as the program itself, exactly what specific costs are involved. And I know I, I sent city manager an inquiry if we could do these individually.
Your comments have been noted, acknowledged. I'm pretty sure staffs can be able to accommodate you. I, I would also add, Jeremy, I think it's a legitimate question that you're asking and stuff too, but this stuff is still fluid. So, but this is just an allocation at this moment.
So if, so if there's one item on here that I don't feel comfortable proving now, I have to say no to all of them.
That's correct. We have a motion to approve and we have a second, we'll take a roll call vote.
Well, we're still in discussion, right?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Well, to Jeremy's point, could you expand on your response there about, about it being fluid, this whole thing being fluid? Will we have an opportunity to, even after we approve this, to revisit some of it?
I mean, they've said it, it's coming back to us with more information. And if it's something that we say, we don't want this, then we have that opportunity.
And if it's something that we say, "We don't want this," then we have that opportunity.
Understand, what we have before us, the key operative operative here is recommendations. We are approving recommendations, and those specific recommendations are allocated proposed dollar amounts in terms of general programs, some specific, some specificities like SCADA, some in generalities such as the digital literacy program. I think it's important for us as a council to allow staff to go ahead and move on this, make sure that we get this done. Now, yes, I understand Mr. Coontz and Mr. Contreras' concerns, but here again, staff is, the city manager is listening to those concerns, and I have very deep confidence that we're going to have those concerns addressed when the information comes back to us in terms of the details and the movement and the allocation of these monies.
The contracts will have to come back to council based on the allocation amount. So we'll be bringing that back because I only have in my authority, so for example, SCADA server upgrades, the price tieback of some of these things, they're all going to come back to council for approval because of the contracting amount, so.
All right, so each one of these is going to come back to us?
Anything on over 50,000 still has to come.
Anything over 50,000 must come before council.
All right. Thank you.
Just, just to piggyback on what you said, Mayor, what, what I'm in support of is this overall framework. And then, as we build on it, then we'll build on it commensurate to facts that we find out as we go down the road that will be relevant. So I'm, I'm all for the framework.
Yeah, we look at this as a, as like a pro forma operating statement. You know, what do we estimate? What do we propose? What do we think's going to happen? These are the dollar amounts that staff has put a lot of time and energy into. These are proposed amounts. Here again, it's in the resolution, proposals. So I think that's, as I said, it's an important key operative in terms of what we are, council, are attempting to approve tonight. So no further discussion, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barron is for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett, for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Coons, for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Contreras, for, or against?
For.
Mayor Proton Harvey, for, or against?
For.
Mayor Gordon, for, or against?
For. Thank you, council unanimously approved. Thank you so much to city manager and staff for the great amount of work that's been into this. We look forward to.
Presentations, as we start to implement them, we'll bring them back for council. Yes.
Moving on to item 5C, consider resolution casting the city council, casting the city council of the city of Duncanville vote for the fourth member of the board of directors for Dallas Council, Dallas Central, Preise District, Corinne's DCAT. It's interesting that this is having to come back to us, you know, reading your package in terms of what, why it's coming back to us, that there has to be a runoff. And looking at the information that was provided to us in our packet, there were 30 cities involved in the vote. 22 cities voted, eight cities did not vote. And so the calculation had to be based on the number of cities that were allowed, that were asked to vote even though they didn't vote. So you look at it, Mr. Hurt, whom this city council voted for and approved, received 13 out of the 30, which was 43%. That's below the majority. But what I did was take a look at, of the voting cities, what did he get? 13 of the 22 cities voted for Mr. Hurt. He got 59% of the vote. So what happens is it still has to come back to us strictly for the math to do a runoff between only Mr. Hurt and Mr. Franks from Saxon. Interestingly, I will note for the record, I did receive a phone call from Mr. Franks asking for me as the mayor of Duncanville to support him, and I rejected his request. Simply stated. So what we have before us tonight is to take a vote on who this city council wishes to represent us at DCAT. So the chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make the motion that we cast our vote for Michael Hurt.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Michael Hurt. May I make a note?
Who was the second?
Contreras.
So before us, city council, we have a motion to elect Michael Hurt as the representative on the DCAT. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Barron is for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Mac Burnett, for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Coons, for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Cooks, for, or against?
For.
Councilmember Contreras, for, or against?
For.
Mayor Proton Harvey, for, or against?
For.
And Mayor Gordon, for, or against?
For. The motion is passed to nominate, or I'm sorry, to, yes, to vote for Mr. Michael Hurt for representative on DCAT. Thank you. Okay, we're going to now move to item number six, staff and board reports, because we're going to keep the executive session, item number 5A, going back as we come.
That's fine if you want to. For the record, no actions needed as a result of the executive session and none is requested, so we can get that one off.
Okay, so is those items that were in the executive session identified on the agenda, there's no action to be taken for item 5D. So we will now move to item six, staff and board reports. Received the police department quarterly report, Rio Police Chief Levigna.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm so excited to stand here and have the opportunity to present our quarterly report for the last quarter of 2021 and to get alluded to and soon to be sworn in as the official chief of police. It's, it's an honor, I'm very humbled. You know, Sir Isaac Newton once said that if I can see farther than others, it's only because I have stood on the shoulders of giants. We, those leaders that have found themselves in a position to lead, it's because of others that have turned around and given them a hand up. And before I start with this tonight, I would just like to, to let everybody know publicly that I have recently appointed Matt Stodgner as one of our assistant chiefs of police. And Matt, congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a very talented department, a very dedicated department, and I hope you'll see that in our quarterly report. So our staffing and personnel, Officer Ryan Peterson and Officer Reagan, a good one, they're both progressing very well in their field training, and they will graduate from their field training and become independently working officers in the month of February. We look for good things from both of them. February 4th, we have a cadet that's graduating from the police academy, Ralston Marshall, and we expect great things from Ralston. He is actually a former assistant warden in the Texas prison system. He is a very mature individual, and we, again, expect great things from Ralston. To go on, we recently hired applicants who tested for a recent test that we provided, entry level test, and two of the three employees will attend the Dallas Sheriff's Office Police Academy beginning at the end of January. And the third employee is a lateral hire from a hospital police department, and he is very well situated and he's going to do well. He will immediately go into our in-service program and then in the field training. Currently, we have exhausted our civil service entry exam and that list, and we're looking to have another entry exam soon. But as you can see down at the bottom point, the next academy start date is April 25th. So we're going to try to take some time to do some recruiting. It's been very difficult on police departments here locally. I've talked to some of the chiefs here in our region and more specifically in the DFW area as well, that the numbers that they are seeing were just, it's problematic. But one good thing that we have noticed over the last couple of tests that we've given is even though those numbers are low for those folks who come out and test, we're getting very, very good quality from those who do pass the test and move on to our list. Our staff development, Sergeant Joseph Emmett, he graduated our City of Duncanville 2021 emergency, emerging leaders program, and Sergeant Emmett does a good job for us as a sergeant on a patrol shift, on a night shift. Officer Michelle Arias attended basic crime prevention specialist training recently, and as you know, Doug Sis will be retiring at the end of March, and Michelle will be taking on his role, and we're very excited for Michelle to do that. So looking back, National Night Out 2021, after having worked through COVID and missing that opportunity there, we had a good showing at our National Night Out in October. We also had our police department open house. We competed with the state fair, and we thought we'd have a little cooler weather in October, but it turned out to be a hot day, but it was a good day, and we had a lot of folks come out and enjoy our open house. We have citizen police academy graduation in November, and that's a great, great opportunity for our citizens to come out and intermingle with our staff who teaches different segments of, you know, to our citizens of what police work is, why we do some of the things we do, and how we do it. And it gets, it allows the citizens to get to know us while also allowing us to, on a more personal level, get to know them. We would love to see more people attend these police gatherings. They're just a great opportunity, and we'll be advertising, COVID's kind of put a little bit of a damper on it as we're trying to move out of this latest strain, but when we have the next one and we advertise for that, please, please, we need more than 10 or 11 people show up to this. We want to feel, we want to have to go ask a church, hey, can, can you give us some room so that we can, we can do this with, with more people? National Drug Takeback, that was a nationwide initiative, October 23rd, and as you can see, we, we had three boxes full of people that were getting rid of over 250 pounds of unused or out-of-date medications. Now, these dispensers are at least the one that's, has the shiny picture on it at the top there, the tower's over the other three. It's in the police department lobby every day. So if you have medications that are unused or out of date, you can drop those off daily. This was just an initiative in the week took part in. Our traffic stops over, well, the last year, but for the fourth quarter, all four quarters, we have dropped a little bit into that fourth quarter, but we're still above where we were in 2020 in that last quarter. So, you know, things are still kind of fluid with, with COVID and these different strains, so we're still on a good level there, and we're still trying to get people to comply with our traffic laws. Some of the patrol activity comparison at a glance, so same quarter, different year, you can see, I mean, we're hitting it, you know, that's, that's going to come out to be 55,000 calls a year, and whereas last year, again, we were coming at the end of COVID. Mr. Cooks?
Chief of, go back one slide, please.
Certainly.
So, so traffic stop does not want that they got a citation, it's just that you stopped them. So they could have got a warning, and then necessarily got a citation, right?
Exactly. We're, we're looking for compliance, and that's, you know, I'm never going to stand up here and tell you that, you know, we wrote X amount of tickets. I mean, I can come up with that number, but we are always looking for compliance, whether it's traffic laws or whether it's any other law. And however we can get there, but that, yes, that's what that indicates.
Is it, is it feasible to, to share? And I know normally when you have, when you have police, they're doing, they're probably hiding and speeding. However, is it feasible to tell our citizen or tell people, period, here's where our police is going to be patrolling more so for speed than not, because we're still getting excessive speeds on major streets in our city? And maybe if they know we're going to be there, they'll slow it down, but I'm just wondering how that, how that can work and help. I'm not implementing more citations, I'm implementing awareness more, people can slow down.
I think it's interesting you bring that up because I've had similar conversations, and we're going to be looking to do something of that nature very soon. You use whatever you can use to your advantage, and some of that may be psychology.
Yes.
Again, you know, we're on a pace for 55,000 calls if we took each quarter throughout a year there, and so our patrol officers are doing more, and they're doing a great job, doing the best job they can do at this point. Now, here's a slide that we, we've had all through the year and each quarter. Now, you'll notice we, we didn't do the citizen on patrol BMV report card surveys in November and December. We were starting to kind of transition to Santa Cop and all that goes on with that, so. But what I will point out is October was the highest pass rate we've had all year.
What's a BMV?
Burglary motor vehicles. Good question. So these are where somebody leaves property in their car, hopefully, we don't do that too much, we try to preach against that, take hide and lock, right? And, you know, it's just somebody opening a car, you know, getting entry into your car and taking something from it. So again, that's an incredible pass rate from what we've seen over the last several quarters, and we'll pick that up again coming into this next quarter.
They just, they walk, they go into the parking lot and they look and see if the vehicle is secure, properly secured?
Yes, sir, and we have a little report card that we leave on their dash, and we always have a sworn officer out with them, and they're always wearing shirts that, you know, that show that they're citizens on patrol. So if, if somebody is wondering about what they're doing, we can have that conversation as well. So Santa Cop, as I mentioned, is another Merry Christmas for 35 families, 127 children, and all courtesy to the Duncanville Police Department and those with whom we partner, school district, you know, and identifying families and kids who would benefit from this, and then people that make donations. Some more pictures of our effort with Santa Cop. You know, the officers will tell you that this is really a great time of year to be able to go out and do this and bring a little light to some child or a family that may not have, you know, had that opportunity otherwise. So department activity, again, at a glance, number of use of force instances in this quarter, eight, all were found to be lawful and within department policy. The number of vehicle pursuits, we had two, and the administrative review determined that the pursuits were within policy and guidelines. Number of complaints, two internal. One complaint still under investigation, another was sustained, and appropriate action, disciplinary action was taken. And we had one external complaint for policy violation that was determined to be unfounded. Our community engagement for the quarter, you can see the numbers there, obviously in October with National Night Out and with our open house, we had markedly more partnerships. And, you know, November, December was, they were a little bit less, but, you know, we had Santa Cop, we had several of those, and again, we had COVID kind of interwinding through those months. Nibers, group A offenses, we always include this slide to kind of give you a reminder of what we're looking at. There's a brief chart of what snapshot of the offenses that are in group A for the quarter. And then there's a slide comparison between our other Best Southwest partners and what we see as far as the group A offense comparison there. And then the maps that we have, October, I'll give you a chance to look at that. And December. For the most part, there weren't any, you know, huge upticks or downturns. Where we typically see that is along 67, if we have some break-ins of vehicles, and it's just an opportune, opportunity there. But it was fairly stable even, even within that corridor.
Is it, is it what? Go ahead, Jeremy.
Go ahead.
Is it what particular area more than the other, though? When you talk about the theft of motor vehicle and motor vehicle theft, is it more?
Well, so the hotels, you know, they do, or the shopping center, you see it there more often typically than residents, neighborhoods and things, although you do get them there as well, because there's a concentration of vehicles. It's, it's where folks can go and see into vehicles that are readily available to be seen, and people may be sleeping if it's a hotel or busy shopping. So it's more opportunistic in those types of venues.
Does that match back up to your program where you're, where you're seeing a lot, is that matching back up, relating back?
Well, and as you may recall, in the, in the previous quarters, we were a little disappointed in, in the pass rate. You know, we were kind of hovering along 50% there, and, you know, we just have to do better individually and as a department, getting that message out. And, you know, again, that was, that was a great turnout in October. We had a 70, at Costco, we had a 78% pass rate, so we're always going to have to work on that and get people's attention.
So you're saying it matched back up or not matched back up?
I, I, I think we see an improvement, but I, you know, I think over the time, it stays fairly steady, and I think we're seeing about what we expect there, but we could always do better.
Mr. Cooks, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. So you, yeah, so theft from motor vehicle, that's somebody taking something out of a car. Right.
So you got theft of motor vehicle, that is where somebody steals your car, the whole time.
And then you.
Then the theft from a motor vehicle is, they changed these up when we went to Nibers, the FBI. It used to be UCR, Uniform Crime Report, and what, what happens is it goes across the country where different police departments and different jurisdictions call things a little different. So that got changed a little bit. You may hear us say BMV because that's. You may hear us say BMV because that's what we grew up calling it, so to speak, in our organization. But that is theft of motor vehicle.
And then motor vehicle theft is the whole vehicle's taken.
Where you stole a vehicle.
So with the motor vehicle theft, what are y'all seeing as far as are people leaving their cars unlocked? Are there actual break-ins?
Well, that's very interesting. You see some of that, but you see, so the mechanisms that we use to start our cars, the keyless mechanisms, they're computer operated. And as you might imagine, any crime, criminals are going to figure out a way to do what they want to do. And I'll tell you, the computers that they will, they will use, and they will take a cloned remote. And at times, they will be able to go in and start your car, open the car. And it's the craziest thing. And I think we have to get that out there, we have to, because there are some things you can do, such as, you know, keep your remote with you, and if it's in your house, if it's, if your car's at your house, keep it far enough away from your car to where it doesn't pick up. Because they'll go through a neighborhood, they'll go through a shopping center, and it'll peep. And so those are some of the things you can do, but we're going to need some help from the car industry, I think, on this one. Because it's, the first time I saw it, I never, I never would have imagined. But there are some interesting things that folks are doing. But anything that we can do to help our public to become educated on this and how to protect themselves, that's what we're always looking to do.
Yeah, I couldn't find my keys, I wanted to make sure I wasn't one of them, so.
So you went out and checked?
Chief, a question, it never occurred to me before, but some of our officers are going to the COG Police Academy, and some of our officers went to the, are going to the Sheriff's Academy. What's the difference and why?
So there's a difference, just in venue, there's no difference in the academy, it's same hours, same topics. So TECO, Texas Commission on Law Enforcement, requires that each academy teaches certain things, and they all have to fall into place. The difference in why we choose to send somebody to another is we haven't used the Sheriff's Office for some time. Several years ago, we started, you know, using Regional Police Academy more exclusively because we weren't sure when Sheriff's Office was going to invite outside agencies to be able to participate in their academies. Now, they just opened up their new facility out on Polk and I-20, and we recently had an opportunity to tour it, and it's really state of the art. And we think, just depending on what academy's coming up, we can look at what we think a cadet needs. You know, if they have maybe some military background, they may not need quite as much discipline because Sheriff's Office does do a little bit more of a regimented academy than what COG does. So we try to put our folks into a situation where they'll be most successful, and they're going to learn what they need to learn.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it very much. Congratulations again to you and to Assistant Chief Stargner.
Thanks, sir.
Moving on to item six B, Receive the Fire Department Quarterly Report. Assistant Fire Chief Greg Chase. Evening.
Greg Chase, Assistant Fire Chief. Sam Rowley is out having a much better time than we are, that's why. This will be the quarterly report for the end of the year. Currently, we have two vacancies. We're giving the civil service exam on February the fifth over at the Senior Center. We do have two personnel in Brookhaven College going through paramedic school. They started around first of December. We do, we had hired a nurse back earlier in the year, and he's done a nurse to paramedic hybrid program over at El Centro. He should be, he's in his clinical rotations at the hospital right now, and he should be finishing up sometime in the spring. We did have one graduate in December of '21, and he has currently gone through all of his field training, and he is on shift and riding antlers. We did our live burns back in October. We did those down at, not Mansfield, but we did them in Midlothian at their new training center to utilize their multi-story building to do some different evolutions. We conducted all of those over the course of a couple of weeks with DeSoto, Cedar Hill, and Lancaster. And those were put on by our Regional Fire Training Chief, Frank Becerra. We received them to serve as our new fire engine, that replaced engine two-seventy-one up on Camp Wisdom. We did have it out front at the City Council. We didn't, this was at the time of a COVID surge as well, so we didn't want to get everybody around there. So we did bring it up here, and then we just did a small wash and push-in-the-fire-station ceremony with our guys there at the station. We, I do have allergies, so, and I've tested myself like three times, so I'm good, but I'm hanging up. My nose is sore from all the tests. We have been doing testing at the fire station, any city employees, and I'm sure we've tested a lot of y'all and their, and their families. We're currently in the process, I've got some numbers over to Lauren Sanchez, our Emergency Management Coordinator, to try and obtain more of those tests because our supply is getting depleted. So we have been doing that for quite some time. We had one firefighter and paramedic go to a TIFMS deployment, which is the Texas Interstate Fire Mutual Aid System. That is the system that sends out apparatus and resources during disasters. If you see all those fire trucks and rescue vehicles going down to the coast during a hurricane, that's done through TIFMS. They did this vaccine, this is about the third one we've done. This particular crew was made up of a captain from Cedar Hill and then firefighter paramedics from DeSoto, Duncanville, Lancaster. So we had a mixed crew, we were down, you know, we were able to help out, we were only down one person, so. We also participated in the City Christmas Parade, we had our apparatus in there, and we also manned the command post. For our emergency management, Lauren conducted a reunification plan with the DISD, and what that is, is when there's an incident in one of the schools and they have to move the kids from one place to another, they have to, it's a logistical, large logistical undertaking to get those kids back to their parents. You want to make sure the kids get back to the correct parents on top of that. So she did that, did, went over their plan with DISD. We also did a winter weather emergency in our EOC with the executive team training back in middle of December. So hopefully, we won't have to use that coming up. I believe we're supposed to have some bad weather coming in, and hopefully, it'll just be rain, so. What we've done over the past quarter, we had a total of eighteen-hundred-and-twenty-eight calls for service. We had twelve building fires, five of those were in Duncanville. I believe five were in Cedar Hill and two were in DeSoto. Thirteen hundred, a little over thirteen hundred calls for service for our ambulances, which is about par for seventy percent, seventy-one percent typically were. I think we ended last year with seventy-three percent of our total call volumes was EMS calls. On a note there, I don't have it on the slide, but for the calendar year 2021, we ended up with seventy-five-hundred-and-eighteen calls, and that's the most we've ever had. That was a little over twenty, twenty-point-six calls per day. About seventeen of those are inside the city limits of Duncanville. So it's not like we're running out in everywhere. A lot of those calls are inside the city of Duncanville. Typically, what we were seeing the past was basically one in Cedar Hill, one in DeSoto, one in Dallas. We did in the agreement, the automatic aid agreement with Dallas, it did drop it just a little bit, then it kind of surged back. I looked at the, these calls, and right now, it did dip off a little bit in the latter part of the year, which is typical, but it only dropped down to just right below twenty, so. As if these numbers keep increasing, we will have discussions about other resources we may need to have to provide to citizens because they're getting about tapped out.
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Appreciate it very much. Any questions, Chief?
It's shorter than that police one, wouldn't it?
Not a question, I want to thank you guys again, because I know when I was there, you had officers that had to stay over because other officers were sick.
Yes.
And so I know it takes a lot that you guys have to do and take your time for your families, I want to thank you for that.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our normal agenda. At this point in time, we're going to recess City Council so that we can go into executive session and take up item five A on the agenda.
Time.
So we are recessing at eight-twenty-five. Cameras are back on, I see the on-air sign. Are we back on?
Okay, Dean, you're back on, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. We are reconvening City Council session, and the timestamp on that is eight-fifty. And in terms of action to be taken as a result of executive session that was called for on item five A, I am asking, and going back to the City Manager, of course, a reconsideration. And with that concluding all of our business for the evening, our City Council meeting is adjourned at eight-fifty-one.